Welcome to the September 1st, 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the please allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpers.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, we can.
Can you please monitor the livestream throughout the meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
And thank you, sir. This brings us to information to the board. Dr. Smiley.
Uh, yeah, just a few things this evening. We, uh, standard about 9,250 students, so a little bit down in enrollment from where we ended last year, uh, but I know there's a number of students pending, meaning we're still waiting on some paperwork, so obviously hopefully get it above 9,300 again. Um, I'd also like to really just thank our, our employee groups, all of them. You know, from, from classified folks that worked all summer to make the buildings look as, as well as they can, to bus drivers who are driving, you know, longer and, and more full routes, um, you know, to our cafeteria staff that has worked as hard as they can in ridiculously hot kitchens. And then, you know, you look at our, our teachers and certainly, you know, we've had some cuts and some class sizes are, are larger than they, they had been. We've had some administrative cuts. I say all these things to say, we, we recognize that we're really trying to run as thin as we possibly can because, you know, every time we can save on operating dollars, that, that helps us in the long run and we've done some pinching. And I know that, that folks are doing more with less and I think that's always been sort of a mantra here, but I think that that really this year's been evident and I'm grateful for all of our, our groups. Our principals are working harder than they have, our teachers, our central office. I mean, we're very lean. I was at the Republican Club last week and I appreciate the invite for that and I said this and I mean this, if you took our central office and put it next to really almost anyone in Northeast Ohio, I guarantee you, we are thinner at the central office ranks and yet we're also about two times the size of any school district in the area. Most are running 45 or 55, Korea gets up there a little bit more in terms of their enrollment. We're at 9,300 and I promise you, we have a smaller central office staff than anybody else and it's testimony to Dr. Schneider and Mrs. Strachey and their work, uh, because I, I think we continue to have a very quality experience and very quality, uh, really, uh, learning environment for our students, but that's folks pitching in and, and doing the best they can with limited resources and in many cases, limited income coming their way. So thank you to everyone who has helped to make this a, a successful start to the school year. I also have this, um, I, I don't, we often offer extremely exciting programs and I think if, if I did sort of a plug for every one of them, we, we maybe run out of time and have three hour meetings every time that we had one, but this is, this one jumped out at me and I asked, uh, Ms. Plageman for some specific information. College Now is, is an organization that we have partnered with, uh, for many years. I don't know exactly how long it's been, but they, we've, they've been a longstanding nonprofit in the Cleveland area and obviously their, their goal is to, you know, get kids to, to college and have, you know, experiences in high school that prepare them for that and, and, you know, sort of, uh, open their eyes to the different possibilities. So College Now is having this Explore Series and I, I wanted to talk about it tonight because it begins soon and registration begins actually today. The fall session is business and finance, different sessions throughout, uh, the, the year, but fall session one is business and finance. Session two is liberal arts and communication. Winter session one is health sciences. Engineering manufacturing follows, environmental sciences, and then social sciences. This is to, um, all high school students. We will operate it at Parma Senior High School and Valley Forge. Norbert students can participate and, and we will have actually shuttle, uh, for them and that's, that's all free. These are three week workshops, uh, and, and if students participate, they actually qualify for an all expenses paid national, uh, field trip. So it hasn't, they haven't named the locations yet, but it'll be in a city that has, you know, thriving business and finance or liberal arts and communication and potentially international trips taking place over winter break, spring break, and, and summer break. Each session is Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 5 o'clock and again, it's three weeks. So we'll, we'll publicize this, but I, again, we have many great opportunities here, but this one really jumped out at me. The fact is, you're gonna be immersed in, in a profession for three weeks, but then to also have these, these trips is really a great opportunity. So wanted to bring that to the board's attention and the republics as well. Make sure you look for College Now Explore.
That's all I have. Very good. Thank you. Communication, Mrs. Carpers.
Um, the only thing I wanted to share was, let's see if it will open. So I was fortunate enough to know about it because my own son participates in it, but let's see if this opens up. The business, um, the Teaching Professions Career and Technical Education Program got to tour the board office on Monday and this was posted, um, about an hour ago. We had shared, um, pictures from it on the so, on the district's page, but one of the students posted, um, such a fun learning experience. It's crazy how many different groups there are in the board office. So I commented back until there, how many, you know, we definitely have a lot of moving parts and she probably, and we were going back and forth and just how, she had no idea what happens back here and that education could climb so far beyond the classroom. And so now her sights are set way higher than just in the classroom. She wants to be, um, the superintendent one day and she said Googling superintendents in like the cities that she thought to Google, she didn't find any females and the first assistant superintendent female that she came across in her, whatever they were doing this research project happened to be Mrs. Strachey. So she was excited, she got to meet her. I don't know what other cities she looked, but they were, huh?
Korea.
They were doing like state superintendent and all sorts of different stuff and like down the ways in the project.
Korea is this female.
Well, I was helping her to look at her too, but yes, it was very, it's nice to see the kids like come back and see a different perspective from stuff like that.
And that was, uh, Ms. Ms. Wozniak Smith and she, she does a great job with that program.
She does. I'm gonna go, I believe, September 15th.
The Thursday.
I think that's 13th. I'm gonna go start with Monday. So one day she was talking about school board, like I had it on my calendar, but I'm going to talk to the class that day. I love it. I love talking to them. Is Mr. Fluck gonna get a reference, sir? He might. Fluck might get a reference.
Or, or run it by.
I wrote a book. All right. So anything?
Well, just starting off the year has been exciting, you know? The first day opening, uh, convocation at, uh, Byers Field, a lot of fun greeting all the staff and, um, uh, just, you know, the excitement of getting back at it and then the kickoff at Byers Field. Amy did a great job working that. It was wonderful. Had a lot of, um, participation, lots of folks showed up for that and a lot of community groups participated and the kindergarten walk around Byers Field is always the highlight. That's a lot of fun, but all the bands played and, uh, it was, boy, if you weren't in the mood or ready for the start of school, that kind of got you there because, uh, that was a lot of fun and all the schools obviously participated and had tables and folks would go around and, uh, uh, walk and talk and, you know, find out stuff and all the community groups. It was a really nice community event and, you know, it took a lot to organize that, so thank you, it went well and, uh...
You get an A plus and a gold star.
There you go.
You get a gold, like that's a double A.
And, uh, also just, uh, being in the buildings the first day of school was pretty fun, you know? That was, that was exciting. And I'm just gonna mention that vending machine at, uh, Pleasant Valley Elementary School. Through their own fundraising and donations from the foundation and some other areas, they were able to, um, get a whole big vending machine and it's filled with books and kids, um, through the PBS program and perhaps other opportunities as well, they'll earn, have an opportunity to earn tokens and they can put the token in the machine and select a book for reading. So that's a pretty cool thing and it's personalized.
And they get to keep the book too.
Oh, yes, it's their, it's their book to keep and, uh, the machine is, uh, personalized for the Pleasant Valley stars, so that was very cute. It was, uh...
It was very nice to be there for that.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a fun thing, so that's all.
Just a good start to the year.
Anything you wanna add to it? Did you enjoy your time at Parma High outside?
Yes, I actually did.
Somehow you had to get to work, but it was like...
Did you participate in the Ukrainian, those parade? Didn't look like it because a little car travel, so it was just three guys walking me down the street and I had to hand it, which was a little weird, but it was, it was a lot of fun, there was a lot of fun. It was glad to do it.
That was unbelievable. I tell that story a lot here lately about the car not starting.
And then it's walk back and it started right out. Like, I don't, I don't know.
I think maybe it was... All right, we'll continue. Uh, Mr. Treasurer, do you have something to add?
Yeah, we have a resolution later on in the agenda to accept the resolution, accept the resignation of my assistant treasurer, Trele, I'll hit up tree that clues, leaving us to go to Baker White State School, become a treasurer, so, uh, office is gonna miss him and wish him good luck.
Well, you know what he's stuffing him, right?
Yep.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about him later.
We had good training here.
Yeah, so.
All right, so that's it for the...
That's it.
Okay. So do we have amendments, walk-ons? No, very good. Public participation. All right, so I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-337 and promote the written record proceeding from August 18th regular and August 21st, Federal Board of Education leaders.
Second.
We have a motion and second, you have to continue, huh? We have a motion and second to move that, uh, to adopt resolution 2022-09-337. Which move, you? Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2000, I forgot to flip my page, sorry, out of practice. Uh, resolution 2022-09-337 has been approved. That brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-09-338, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with McWatters Consulting LLC for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-338. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-09-338 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-09-339, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022 through 2025 school years.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-339. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-339 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-340, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-340. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-340 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-341, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-341. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-341 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-342, authorizing agreement for Power School Special Program software.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-342. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-342 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-09-343, approval to enter into a contract between the Career and Technical Education Job Training Experiential Learning Program of the Parma City School District and Old Time Pottery.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-343. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-343 has been approved. You okay?
Yeah, swallowed it, went down the wrong feet.
Just wanna make sure you're not choking.
Okay, unless another board hand, board member has anything to discuss regarding curriculum for this evening, that will conclude.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Fine job with that. Uh, business, Mr. Ruda.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-344 authorization or authorizing an arbiter pay license subscription.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution 2022-09-344. Any questions or comments from the board? If you have something you wanna say about that, Mr....
Do you want me to, um, arbiter pay is, well, we used to pay referees and it's all through the service company, so we're not, no longer like directly writing checks to referees. You could've done it per transaction or a flat fee for a year and the flat, flat fee is cheaper because we have so many sports, right? Three high schools, four high schools, so it's what...
It's easier to do that.
Yeah, I think they'll get our payroll, right? Very good, thank you.
We're also gonna expand that to, uh, Byers Field workers at some point as well.
Oh, good, that is this year.
That'll be this year too.
That's this year? Oh, nice, excellent. Okay, roll call, Mrs. Nusio. Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-344 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-345, approving alternate transportation companies for field trips and athletic events when district transportation is not available.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-345. Any questions or comments from the board?
If I can just comment, we don't anticipate utilizing this very often because those folks are having the same issues we are in terms of flag drivers, but it does give us another, you know, resource to call if we need to. I just don't want people to think this is some type of outsourcing move or, um, this is only if everybody's exhausted and, um, again, they're, they're struggling as well.
I've been doing this for a long time because I know we use this service a lot.
We did take the limo company off though. I enjoyed the limo, I enjoyed the limos, only never took those. All right, very good.
Mrs. Nusio, roll call. Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-345 has been approved.
Right, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business. Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Fine job there, sir. This brings us to finance, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2022-09-346, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-346. Any questions or comments from the board? Do you, Mr. Nusio?
Largest, whether it's $78,000.
Yes, thank you.
That's the, when the governor went on TV and they announced that everyone's getting his safety grant and everybody was surprised in the school because he didn't bother telling us or OFCC who runs the project. So that's $78,000, that's the largest one out there. Couple others there for class 2023 and Greenbrier, general athletics, but there's nothing really significant out there.
There you go, thank you. Roll call then. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, uh, resolution 2022-09-346 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening. We have the easy load there, Mr. Kreis.
Well, it's the, the first of the month. We haven't had much time yet. The next one, huh? The next one. I'm sure Sean will have a lot of things for the next one.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir, for your time there. Uh, this brings us to legislation, Mrs. Carpers.
Uh, Human Resources, yes, yeah. Oh, legislation, I'm sorry, I skipped a policy. No, we, I don't have any need for legislation today.
Uh, my order was legislation there.
Sorry, I skipped over, it was the last line on that, I had a right to human resources from Mrs. Bratz. My computer won't connect to the internet, so I'm struggling, I forget. Um, I don't have anything unless another board member has anything to discuss for legislation today.
Thank you, not.
Nothing, so surprised later on, it's, all right.
There's, well, you know, their legislators are off.
Right.
They're campaigning something. Yeah, that's what they're off for. They're busy.
They're really campaigning, all right. Okay, so that brings us, uh, Human Resources, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-347, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence, acceptance of certificated resignations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-347. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-347 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-348, confirmation of certificated administrative appointments replacements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-348. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can, uh, can comment, if you'd like. So this, um, was another move that was necessitated by us letting a couple of administrators out of their contracts right around August 1st, um, but given consolidation and the opportunities that those administrators have, we felt that that was, uh, appropriate at that time. So we're very glad that, that Todd was willing to, to step up into this leadership position. This is actually split, uh, between Shiloh and Ridgebrook, uh, so sort of an interesting, uh, elementary, you know, slash middle school experience for him. Uh, does not have previous administrative experience, but was very highly thought of as a health and phys ed teacher in our district, um, really lauded especially for his work with especially challenging students, um, some with disabilities. Uh, so we're, we're very excited. He has really drawn rave reviews to this point at, at both schools, uh, so it looks like we potentially were able to really nab an up and cover, uh, you know, even at the end of the summer here. And according to Dr. Schneider, he is jacked as well, so. He's in good shape, he's, yeah.
We, we would talk fitness, he's...
He talks fitness.
Yeah. I would expect so, I have a phys ed teacher.
Lead by example, it's a good thing.
All right, so...
Welcome, Todd.
Yes, welcome, Todd, and I feel like we should say hi.
You wouldn't get mixed up with the other Todd at Shiloh then, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, uh, roll call, Mrs. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-348 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-09-349, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-349. Any questions or comments from the board? I believe I've met Miss Clark today at Runwood during my little tours of the schools. Very nice lady.
She is.
Very excited about the upcoming retirement. Don't really focus on the year though, because it's gonna go by quickly, as I recall. So, yeah, very nicely.
And I hope they will come and be recognized.
Yes, right?
Yes, this will be the end of the year.
Yeah. This is early for retirements, too, isn't it?
When you know, you know.
All right, roll call, Mrs. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-349 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-09-350, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence, approval of classified stipend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-350. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpers.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-09-350 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-09-351, authorization to hire Kathleen Heiser for treasurer's office consulting as needed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-09-351. Any questions or comments from the board? Do you wanna explain what's going on here?
So, Kathy Heiser retired from my office on June thirtieth and she had wealth of knowledge on how to do grants, file a special report, request the cash from the state and other related grant activities and she's gonna come in as needed to help the new person out.
Help the new person out, mentor them.
Yep.
Yeah, very good, it's always good to have a mentor. All right, anybody else? Roll call then, Mr. Nusiel?
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five one has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two zero nine three five two, appointment of compliance officers for the Palmer City School District for calendar year two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five two. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel?
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five two has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, that will conclude Human Resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth. Thank you for your time. This brings us to policy, Mrs. Carpus?
Yes, I moved to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five three, approval of following technical policy changes. Policy zero one six one parliamentary authority, policy zero one six two forum, policy zero one six three presiding officer, policy zero one seven three for officers, policy twenty five twenty point zero two, public complaints about curriculum instructional library media materials, policy twenty five thirty one, copying of copyrighted materials, policy twenty six oh five, program accountability and evaluation, policy thirty three ten frame of speech in non-instructional settings, policy thirty three sixty two A, harassment certified staff employee-to-employee harassment, policy thirty three sixty two point oh one, threatening behavior towards staff members, policy seventy two forty site acquisition, policy seventy four thirty safety program, policy seventy four forty planned security, policy seventy five thirty point zero one, staff use of cellular telephones and electronic communication devices.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five three. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a bunch of technical changes, updating, revising, or, you know, bird glass revision dates.
Sure. The OVA stuff, right?
Yo.
And I'm just glad I don't have to read all that a second time. So, roll call, Mr. Nusiel?
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five three has been approved.
Unless any other board members have anything to discuss, that will conclude policy for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpus, very good, thank you for your time. Business of the board, we need to discuss, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five four, to designate a Title IX coordinator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five four. Any questions or comments from the board? No, roll call, Mr. Nusiel?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five four has been approved. Is there any information on qualified board members? Is there any question or concern, we ran the record, disappointing. We don't have any executive section. Wow, so before I do this part, I just wanna remind you that, you know, recalling the row-a-boat philosophy up here on a school board, I'm gonna get my spiel in, just remember that when you row a boat, that your back is to the future and you face the present and the past and that you have to learn from the past, focus on the present and be ready for the future. Just a little tidbit to remind you from the PJ Fleck stuff, I'll be saying it frequently. So, you're rolling a boat, get your oars in the water, people, let's do it. Yeah, then that brings us to this part. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five six to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine dash three five six. Roll call, Mr. Nusiel?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody for attending, thanks for watching.